Good evening. It's 5:00. And we'd like to call the regular meeting to order, June 11, 2019. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And welcome. Ms. Westfall, would you please call the roll?
Carol Brown.
Present.
Maxine Drew.
Present.
Janie Humphries.
Present.
Brenda Jones. Wanda Brownlee Page.
Present.
Valdivia Nguyen.
Present.
Stacy Yeager.
And we'd like to read the procedures, board norms and protocols. Excuse me. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district. We agree to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself. We agree to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings. We agree to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district. We agree to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings. And we agree to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. Thank you. Before we have the agenda, I have three motions I'd like to make, please. Motion number one, I move to change the agenda to, in essence, compress all the library topics under one heading and making number six. And I'll repeat these, Ms. Westfall, so you can get this in a minute. Number six turns into the library and that it then would include, encompass D from the consent agenda and the section of the payment of bills. I can repeat that motion if it's necessary. You want me to repeat it? Okay.
Please, could you?
Sure, be happy to. Move to change the agenda to compress all the library topics under one heading, which would make it number six, library. That would, of course, move the consent agenda to number seven. But that the library then would have the discussion of item D under the consent agenda, that would be public library policy update, and it would be then the segment from number seven, payment of bills, would be the library payment of bills. So it compresses all the business of the library under one section entitled "library," and that would be number six.
And I just have one question. Are you talking about just tonight or are you talking?
No, for future, moving forward.
Including tonight.
Including tonight. Thank you, Ms. Westfall. Been moved, I need a second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. The rationale is that the library is its own entity. All of the information dealing with the library comes under the library. It's not one here, one there. So that in the future would be HR, payable, anything that's library.
Could we just leave it as is, just for tonight, and then make it effective at the next meeting?
Sure.
And make it easier?
So can you make an amendment, or I can amend the motion to read, moving forward and not tonight? More do you liking?
Yes.
Discussing? Discussion? So all in favor of moving it forward?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passed. Got that, Ms. Westfall? All right. And then I have a second motion, please, to add executive session to discuss administrative level contracts pursuant to the exception for non-elected personnel under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. Mr. Goheen, does there have to be added to that with any action?
So what, are you planning to have action to follow right now?
No, with no action to follow.
Moved.
Is the exception?
Exception for non-elected personnel under the Kansas Open Meetings Act? Been moved and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And then the third, I move to add a second additional, excuse me, second executive session to discuss job descriptions pursuant to the exception for non-elected personnel under Kansas Open Meetings Act with no action to follow.
Under all the movement, we'll do that next time.
To discuss job descriptions pursuant to the exception for non-elected personnel under Homa with no action to follow.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passed. Now, I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passed. Good evening, Dr. Faust.
Good evening. So, welcome, everyone. We are all in our summer routine of, you know, we move fast, full-fledged ahead, making sure that people are in the right spots, getting our schools prepared. This is the opportunity when people think that, you know, the school district just kind of shuts down, but this is actually when we actually, it literally speeds up and a lot of the work that's behind the scenes takes place so that we can have a successful school year. So we are working hard, and I'm always enjoying the work, problem-solving and making sure. Tomorrow, we have our annual golf tournament. And so, we are looking forward to those who play golf and those of us who don't play golf. I'd say, wear your hard hats. But we will be out there tomorrow playing golf, so we're looking forward to it.
All right. Thank you. Just like to welcome everyone to the summer. And if you're from Kansas, you never know what the weather. I understand the last meeting had a little boomers, a lot of wind. But thank you, and I'll reserve my comments to when we get to that section of the meeting. Other comments?
I have something that Ms. Jones wanted me to read.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones and her son Sidney asked me to read this to you. To my babies, Kansas City, Kansas Public School employees, church and community members and fellow board members, I thank you from my heart for the cards, flowers, balloons and phone calls I have received while I have been in the hospital. The cards my babies made me left me speechless. We had a lot of tissues for that. Your best wishes and prayers have uplifted my spirits and my families during a difficult time. I am on the mend now and look forward to July and being back working with my fellow Board of Education members. On behalf of my more than 22,000 babies, thank you to everyone. Brenda C. Jones, AKA Ms. Purple, and Sidney Jones.
Nice, thank you. And we sure sent out prayers for her recovery, but not too quickly, only adequately and safely. Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, I would just like to personally thank my colleagues and the board and everyone who has provided support. Our family has gone through a very difficult time, and thanks to your support, it kind of eased the pain a little bit, so I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Any others? Ms. Westfall, do we have any community comment? Dr. Faust?
So, I said the Kansas City Board of Education approved the negotiated agreement with the teachers for the 2019-20 school year as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Questions?
Could we have some clarification on the word "continuous" in the contract under the longevity bonus, Greg?
I think the question you're referring to, I'm not sure where it's at exactly, but the issue relates to the longevity bonus, as to whether that would apply for teachers who have separation in the 10 years, the minimum, for the longevity bonus. And as we understand it and intend to administer it, it would be 10 years, minimum, working for this district, whether that's five years with a two-year absence and then five more years, or whether it's five years, meaning one through 10. It's meant to mean 10 years in this district as opposed to 10 years, you know, Ivan Shawnee Mission and five here. That makes sense.
Okay, so if you work five years and you take a couple of years off to have children or to take care of a parent, and you come back, then you don't have to start at number one again, you restart at number six.
You're not starting at one, it's years in this district.
Okay. I want to make sure that that was clear, because "continuous" is kind of, has a different definition for me, but I know legal things are different.
It may not have been the best choice of words, but that's the word that was picked.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Sure.
No other? No other?
That was my only question.
All right.
Do we need a motion?
Needs a motion.
I move that we accept the recommendation from the superintendent.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passed. Number five, board work session.
I said the Kansas City Board of Education accept as an informational item, a report on the 2019-20-20 superintendent's proposed budget as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and is recommended by me, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, board superintendent.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, we're going to present the 19-20 proposed budget, called the superintendent's plan for success. We will review the general budget, the capital budget, the child nutrition budget, and the public school libraries budget. Back when I first came, we walked through what we considered the budgeting philosophy, which was establishing the pathway to success, representing the district priorities, and maximizing the use of the taxpayer dollars. Those are still in effect. The sequence of the budget was to review our Board of Education strategic priorities, establish the next year's budget priorities, review our modified zero-based budget, determine redirection reductions, prioritize those reductions, determine our new funding, calculate revenues, and maximize use of all funds, then present the balance budget to the board, and that's what we're here to do tonight. These BOE strategic priority rankings. Back when we first came back in March, we had a session, it's where we worked on what our priorities are. We had seven, six focus areas for the board, so we ranked those in our priorities, which safe and respectful learning environment came out number one, high-performance workforce number two, and high expectations for student achievement, and so forth. And later during the presentation, you'll see how our recommendations line up with these priorities. The modified zero-based budget to actual expense. The finance team went through numerous meetings with all fund donors and principals, where we went line by line through their budgets, looking at their three-year trend, excluding the personnel, and looked at return on investments, where we were spending money, and then we had to make some hard decisions, where either money was over-budgeted or programs that was not effective was cut. So I will show you the results of those exercises. So out of the categories that we reduced, our, the salary and benefits section of the budget, we reduced by $2.5 million, which most of it was in our substitute teachers' line. We have changed from having subs on a contract to finding them within, with our district staff and paying them out of the district funding. The projection that was used was too high, and so we were able to reduce the sub teacher line by about $2 million. The other major expense in there was our school resource officers. We are going to repurpose the dollars for five security police officers, and you'll see that later on in our new additions as to how we're going to repurpose those dollars, but it would be a one-for-one swap. But it was a reduction out of the categorized for salary and benefits. Our purchase services, we reduce our employment services line for your background checks and other employment services-type contracts. We had a reduction in our tuition reimbursement and some consulting services. Supplies, as you see, we cut some instructional supplies out of our technology department. We cut our audiovisual supplies. And the school library, we cut some funding for library books, but later you'll see in the capital budget where we included some dollars for books for libraries. And the last piece was our equipment. In the technology, there was some parts in, for audiovisual and our computers that the lines were over-budget based on the three-year trend. So based on those reductions, we were able to redirect or repurpose $3.3 million out of the 2018-19 adopted budget. Determine our costs and prioritize new funding. We call new funding case for investments. And then we categorized them as, the first category is called sustaining operations, and my slide is sort of skewed, but the social workers in the 2018-19 budget, there was 34 social workers added for, to be paid from the contingency fund. And also, when you all approved that, you stated that in the next fiscal year that you will move half of those to the general fund. So this is the money to move 17 social workers from the contingency fund to the general fund. The other 17 are still in the contingency fund, so they are not reduced, they're still in the contingency fund. And skilled trade workers, when I was reviewing the capital budget, I saw that was $2.5 million of your capital, of our capital funding that was being used to pay for salaries. That puts a hindrance on your capital funds to fix our buildings. So we're proposing moving half a million dollars of those salaries to the general fund, which would leave $2 million of it still in the capital fund. Stormwater rate increase, we got the information from Unified Government that this rate was going up. Our current cost was $2,500. Next year, it will be $187,500, non-negotiable. And the Fairfax Learning Center, the Green Bush people came and presented the contract for the Fairfax Learning Center, and it includes an increase of $73,925 that you all approved at the last, at your previous budget meeting. So the total case for investment for sustaining operations is $1,658,925. Investing in our employees, salary increases, based on what you all just approved, for the certified staff, all certified staff, there will be a 1% increase to the base. Everybody paid on their bachelor schedule, get one step. If you're paid on their master schedule, you get two steps, and then we have a 2% supplement to all sped teachers and auxiliary services. Our classified staff, we're proposing a 2% increase. I'm sorry, the certified staff cost is $3.6 million, and the certified staff, 2%, is about $1.1 million. We're also going to have a longevity supplement that we're proposing. When you reach 10 years of service with the district, you will receive a 1% supplement, just for years 10 through 14. Then when you get to 15 years, through your 19th year, you get a 1.5% longevity, and when you get to 20-plus, it goes to 2%. And this will be paid in a lump sum the month after your anniversary date. The cost to do that for certified staff is right at $600,000, and for classified, right Next slide, oh, let me back up.
Is the next slide duplicated? Should we go onto the next slide?
Yeah.
Next slide.
Yeah.
Can we just go to the next slide? Slide 15? Thank you for numbering the pages, Dr. Faust.
Next, we are, new programs, we have safe schools, which, as you, as one of your high priorities was the safe environment. So we have the Safe Schools Initiative, and the first one you see is that campus security, remember in the reductions, we reduced it by $353,836, was the cost of the five uniform police officers. We're proposing that we convert those dollars to eight campus security associates, and we would deploy those eight with two at, two at our four comprehensive high schools. And so they, instead of having two police officers, they'll have one police officer and two CSAs. Also, for our security, we need to invest in a computer automated dispatch and records management system called a CAD. That'll cost us about $20,000 a year. And then we're proposing that we purchase the student transportation monitoring system, normally known as here comes the bus. This system will allow parents to know when the bus is approaching the bus stop, when the student gets on the bus and off the bus. And it will let the driver know what students are on the bus, or if a child is not supposed to be on that bus, when they scan their ID, their picture will pop up, and the driver will know the child's on the wrong bus. The software for that piece is $118,000 a year. Later on in the capital budget, you'll see the cost for the hardware to install it on all our buses. Then we have the Alternative Suspension Center. This is where we will have a center at the Fairfax Building, ran by Green Bush, for our long-term suspended students, 10 days or more, will hold a maximum of 25 kids at a time, where they will continue to get instructional service during that suspension period. And along with that, in that contract, it calls for us to add a social worker. So we will add a social worker for the Fairfax Center. Again, this was approved at a previous board meeting, so that costs us about $343,000. The instructional software, college and career readiness, there's a software package called Naviance that we're proposing, that we buy to help monitor the college and career readiness of our students. And the next one's our universal screening for cognitive skills. This is a program where we will screen students in grades one, six, and I think eight, for cognitive skills, to see if they are gifted. And as you know, the state funds gifted students, and so this will help us identify our gifted students. Right now, we do not have a screening tool for that. Instructional staffing increases. We're going to propose that we hire six bilingual outreach coordinators to help us better communicate with our public, to help services for students and parents. Our federal requirement states that we must communicate with our families in the language that they speak. And so these bilingual outreach coordinators will speak the predominant languages of the district, but we will have purchase services for the languages that they don't speak, so we can serve all our community. We're also proposing that we add two sped teachers and two professionals to increase our classes by two. Our world language curriculum specialists, we will be adding eight Spanish teachers to our middle schools. This world language curriculum specialist is like an IC that will help the curriculum and the development of the case, course of study for our foreign language curriculum. We're adding two ESL instructional coaches, along with two fine art instructional coaches. The fine art coaches would be for art and visual art and music and theater. And our staff development, new programs and initiatives. Our evaluation training model, we're currently going through the LSI model. This will continue allowing our teachers, our principals, to be trained in the LSI for his evaluations. This program will run us about $288,000 a year. The strategic plan development, we currently do not have a strategic plan for the district, so we will be hiring a consultant to help us to develop, write, publicize, and monitor a strategic plan. It will be a five-year plan for the district that we will then develop. SOP training, shelter instructional observation protocol is for ESL students. This program's designed to help integrate them with mainstream curriculum and help them with their English language learning. We also propose that we begin an aspiring leadership academy. This is to help our assistant principals and new principals develop in their leadership model, and hopefully this is the start of our, growing our own. And our last one's our classified supervisor training. This is our crucial conversation, where we will train the department heads in our central office on holding crucial conversations with staff. The total for that staff development piece is $343,000. Additional staffing that superintendent and I are proposing is that we hire an executive director of school services. This person will be over like our counselors or nurses or counselors, nurses, social workers, and give leadership to that, those categories of people. We need to hire two executive administration assistants. One will support the executive director of school services, the second one will support our elementary instructional improvement officers. Compensation analyst, we need to do a study on the salary schedules of the people in our district and to review the market and to see where people are placed on the current salary schedule, and we will have, hire a compensation analyst that will perform those duties. And also, it's not like one time, do it and it stops, you need to monitor those constantly because the market rates do change, and so this person will be year-round doing our compensation analysis. We need to hire a lead psychologist. This lead psychologist was also, will also be a school psychologist in one of the schools, but they will also be the lead of all the school psychologists. Program evaluator, when we start programs, I'll be going return on investment. If you don't have someone to set up what you're going to monitor, what you're going to measure, you'll never know if you're getting a return on investment. We currently do not have an evaluator, and most of the federal grants that we go after require an evaluation. So this person will do that service and provide our evaluations for all our programs. Student records manager, this person will be in charge of all student records in our district. They will be responsible for if someone needs a transcript or a student needs help. This will be a person they can contact to see what kind of classes do I need to finish this pathway to go to where I want to go. This person will be a source for that, along with other sources in the schools, but this person will help also with that, and their other duty would be to help principals with their master schedule. The school treasurer facilitator, we have 53 schools, 53 what I call financial secretaries. We need to train them. Right now, there are some efficiencies, inefficiencies, and some risks that this system has that, due to the lack of training. So this person will be responsible for training our school treasurers. And the last one is our student transportation trainer. We have one trainer now for all bus drivers in the district. If that person goes out sick or for any reason, we don't have training that day. Also, this person will also help with routing and be able to ride with bus drivers on routes to ensure school safety. So the total cost of all our programs is $3,291,317. So in summary, the sustaining operations piece was $1.658 million, investing in our employees was $7.441 million, and our new programs was $3.2 million for the total case for investment of $12,391. Earlier, I told you how you all ranked our priorities. So the next few slides will show you, of all the new initiatives, case for investment that we proposed, these are the priorities that they fall under. They could be listed several times because it supports several initiatives, several priorities. So in our safe and respectful learning environment, of the new initiatives that we propose, adding social workers, hiring the campus security associates, the CAD system, student transportation monitoring system, and so forth, as you read on the slide. student transportation monitoring system, and so forth as you read on the slide, these initiatives support that priority. As far as high-performance workforce, I highlight the major ones. Our salary increase, beginning teacher pay, executive director of school services, high school transportation training, the compensation analysis, salary adjustment. These things line up with the high-performance workforce. High expectations for student achievement. Bringing on the Alternative Suspension Center at Fairfax along with continuing the Fairfax contract with their increase, hiring our bilingual outreach coordinators, our world language curriculum specialists, our universal screeners, our program evaluator, that student records manager. All of these lead to higher expectations for student achievement. Good stewards of resources and financial accountability. The moving of social workers from your contingency fund to your general fund is a highly recommended good steward of funding. You really don't want to pay salaries out of contingency fund. Same thing with the skilled trades, moving those from your capital funding over to the general fund also helps release some of the strain that you have for your capital budget. Covering the stormwater increase, as I stated before, it was mandated. You can't not pay it. So we have to pay the bill. Our health premium increase, compensation analysts, all of these things support good stewards of resources and financial accountability. The last two, communications and marketing and our positive community relations and partnership, hiring our bilingual outreach coordinators and developing our strategic plan will support these two initiatives. Calculating the revenue to fund those case for investments. Our state aid increase projection is $9,089,000. And how do we maximize the use of these funds to balance the budget? So the total case for investment was $12,391. The dollars that we redirected out of your 2018-19 adopted budget was $3.3 million. And we are projecting we get $9,089 from the state. And when you put those together, we have a balanced budget where the balance is zero. That concludes the general funds budget. Next, we will walk through the capital budget. Our meal levy shows that we should get about $10.5 million. And this is an annual recurring amount for the levy. So we're proposing, you see listed on your right-hand side, what we do with those $10.5 million on an annual basis. I won't read them all to you, but the major ones are the major, the maintenance salaries that I spoke of earlier. In this current year, that number is $2.5 million. It's going down to $2 million for next year. Debt retirement. We had the Q-SAB bonds and the QC SB bonds. There is a $15 million payment due in 2022. And then there's an additional $5 million due in, I think it's 2025. These funds that we pay annually will have it so that when those dollars are due, you don't have a one-time hit to your budget of $15 million. The copper lease, it's cost us a half million dollars a year for our copper lease program. And then the major ones are the buildings, bus rotation. Our buses are, we need new buses. So this will allow us to buy four replacement buses every year at $360,000. We replace two HVAC units every year. Roof replacement, over the past three to four years, we've spent about $3 million each summer doing work on our roofs, replacing those. What's new, gym floors. Our gym floors needs work. These dollars will allow the middle school and high schools gym floors to be done every other year. Astro turf replacement. Astro turf is beautiful. It looks good, but it's expensive. And after, I think, eight to 10 years, you have to pull it up. And so the $185,000 will allow us to replace two a year until we get to replacing them all. And then you can redirect those funds to do other things. The LED lighting. Many of our buildings still use the very, very expensive lighting. We need to go to LED lighting. It will reduce utility bill and we should be able to recoup lots of those dollars if we get, when we get the lightings replaced. Floor replacement is replacing carpet and tiles that's in some of our buildings. When you walk the building, they are in array. So we need to have funds set aside to take care of those. The TIS secondary hardware rotation. We put all the smart boards and, and all the audiovisual stuff in our schools, but there was never a budget to replace any of them. So we propose that we add $750,000 a year to put all of those on rotations. So they normally last anywhere from five to six years. We've had most of ours a little longer. So they're all breaking down. Schools are having to buy some out of their own schools budget. But this will help us to supplement those until we get them all replaced. Furniture replacement, same thing as the audiovisual. Many of our schools, the furniture needs replacing. We've got broken chairs, broken desks. We need to establish a budget line where we can replace furniture every year. And the last line is our emergency projects. When a principal calls with a work order for something that wasn't planned to be fixed, we need to have dollars where the maintenance shop can go out and fix those. So the $10.5 million is what we have in our recurring that ties to your meal levy. Now, the other piece of the capital budget, the contingency piece. We have $4.8 million that we're proposing to spend out of the contingency to do the things you see listed on the right. Our network switches is $2.4 million. We need to replace our network switches in all our schools. The good thing about that is those are what we call eratable expenditures. And we will get $2.2 million of that back in the next school year, once we replace them all. But you have to fully budget them, get them replaced, and then they refund the money. We're proposing that we buy 10 police vehicles. Right now, we are at risk when we have our school resource officers traveling in their own cars. So this will, to help us to give us 10 police vehicles for our police officers. One-to-one student computer ratio. Our K2 is currently at two to one. The dollars we need to get it to one-to-one is the $718,000 that we have proposed in next year's budget. Library circulation, I mentioned earlier where we had a reduction for library books. We're proposing that we take a look at all of our school libraries, not the public library, school libraries, and look at the circulation and update those circulations. The middle and high school security system. We, with, with the climate for active shooters, we, we really don't have a good notification system. Right now, if there's something going on in a school, if you can't get to the school intercom or if you don't have a walkie-talkie, you can't notify the school. So what we're proposing is a security system where it's fingerprint-driven, where all employees will have been fingerprinted and their fingerprint will activate an active shooter drill alarm system where the siren goes off and does a flashing light in the hallway, does a phone call immediately to our police force and the KCK police force. So all you gotta do is activate it. Students cannot activate it. It's protected. And you can't not, if you put your finger on it, it will activate. So it's not a toy. But to check, to make sure that you are in the system, we will install a monitor in the teachers' lounges where you can place your finger on it. And if it turns green, you are in the system. If it turns red, you need to contact the chief so you can get put in the system. Everyone needs to be able to activate. And it's not just you in your building. If any of us go to a school or if a principal's at another school, as long as you are an employee of our system and we have fingerprinted you, if you put your finger on that monitor, it will activate. So like I said before, it's not a toy because it's very, very loud. It's going to be very disruptive. Also, the good thing about it, one of the issues when first responders come to a site, they don't know where the shooter is. If you have multiple buildings, all you can see is when people are running out. This system will tell you where it was activated at, which building, which floor, to allow the responders to concentrate in that area. The next forward just, we, we are in dire need to upgrade some of our equipment either in P.E., art, music, and custodial. So we propose to spend $4.8 million out of contingency funds for our capital funds. The good news about that, there will be approximately $12.4 million still left in the contingency fund. Where there, if there are other projects that we need to evaluate, we have $12 million that's free, that, I mean, that we have in the contingency funds that we can look at project that needs to be done across the district. Our school nutrition budget, as you know, the school nutrition budget is driven off sales. As you see at the bottom, our sales projection is $17.3 million. And to balance this budget, we're going to need about $947,000 from the child nutrition contingency funds. As you can see on the chart, I don't want to read all the lines to you, but the operating budget for child nutrition for next year is $18.2 million. The increases to the budget, as you can see, is include the 2% salary increase. And we're proposing to bring the beginning pay for our child nutrition workers to $13 an hour. That will be the highest in this area. And that will help us in recruiting the staff that we need. We have a lot of vacancies. And as soon as we can get this approved, that would definitely help us in recruiting. They also received the longevity. That'll cost us about $12,000 for their longevity payments a year. So it's $415,000 for investing in our employees for child nutrition. They need to hire operations manager, 10 food assistants. Now, the food assistants are mainly cashiers. As you know, we're coming out of CIP where the schools were, that didn't have to charge. Now we're going to have to put cashiers in those buildings because we would have to charge because we losing our CIP. I mean, CEP. And we also need to upgrade our warehouse supervisors. That will cost us $186,000. So for the child nutrition, our total case, total increase for case for investment is $601,000. On the last budget to take a look at is our public library. The meal levy for the, for the public library is about, what's that, $8.4 million for the meal levy for operating and capital. And then with our, the library board for the whole county, we get about $2.8 million in revenue. So our total recurring revenue is $11.3 million. Now, if you go up to the top, you see that our total operating budget is only $10.4 million. What's missing is the capital levy. The capital levy is set each year to be held until we determine a project that we need to, that we would use the fund balance on. And if you look at the bottom, the contingency fund for the general is at $7.7 million, which comes from when you would, like the $10.4 million that's proposed for next year. You see it's, the 17, 18 budget was 8.7. So if any of those, if we don't spend the $10.4 million, that will fall down to your general fund balance. So the funds that you don't expend out of your approved budget falls back to your general fund. As long as you have revenue, that also covers those expenses. And then the capital fund balance is 3.8, and we would add the 8.73 to it. So it'll be 4.6 next year. Next steps. Budget work sessions. I left for you all departmental budgets. We are free to ask questions and answer your questions at our next budget work session. And we determine when we're going to have those. Then we need to get our final budget allocation forms from the state. The last conversation we had with the state that that's going to be around mid-July, which is going to put us in a tight crunch. You get all the forms complete, which will require us to have a special board meeting to adopt the budget the first week of August. So we can get it publicized in the paper for 10 days. Then you have to hold a public hearing. And after the public hearing, we have to transmit the budget to the county clerk and KSDE on August 24th. Any questions?
Well, first, thank you. And you, you guys like those sports analogies. So you've run the first leg.
Thank you, ma'am.
And so now you're passing us the baton.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want questions on this or do you want to wait till our budget workshop?
We prefer to wait till the budget workshop.
That's what I figured.
If you can send them to me early, I can make sure I have the answers when we get there.
Okay. And for the people who were not in my, our session, I passed out. Could you give that to Mr., you keep that and give that to Mr. Brown. I take this to Mr. and Ms., Dr. and Ms. Humphries. And why I, I said to him, he ran the staff first thing. You, you know, I know you're thanking your staff too.
Yes, ma'am. We done a lot of hard work. Tracy, Brad. Yes, a lot of hard work.
Exactly. Because state law, of which if we don't know it, then that, that is no excuse. But nevertheless, in Kansas, the statutes say that the board shall prepare the budget. Now, you've done the hard work. You've done the, 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 the big work. But we're also, and I gave you a copy, members of the state statutes that also say that we're responsible and when, when, and I have a copy for this too, that we're responsible for every dime. So that what we discovered, Ms. Dr. Yeager and Ms. Drew, when we had our discussion, and we'd discovered that over the past, that we may have a discussion and we have one understanding from the discussion, but unless we are clear and take a vote on this is how we want things done, it kind of gets lost in the discussion. So as we move forward, members, and as we look at individual points, and I appreciate you saying that, you know, if there are, we knew that, but I like you verbalizing it, especially the social workers. If there are positions in any of these that maybe were funded via a pilot, but we feel that is important enough to sustain, knowing we're going to have to fund that year after year after year, we have to find money from someplace.
Yes, ma'am.
And so what the, the responsibility of each board member is, follow the money every dime and be very clear in what we think we want. And we have to be very clear to staff, otherwise we won't see it the next year. So those are just my comments, and you have copy of the statutes. And you.
Madam Chair, that earlier discussion is only three social workers that we lost from the pilot.
Right. We asked Mr. Covington, in our discussion, in our preliminary work spot, we had the understanding perhaps that only 17 of the, wrong, wrong. Of the 11 of the pilot, six would not be funded.
Right.
And so we were, I went back and checked the report that Angela Dunn gave to us. And again, now we know that if we cared to fund those six additional positions, we had to find money for them.
Right, but the number is now three, not six.
The number's now three.
Three.
Okay.
Just three.
Matter of clarity. So we have to get the numbers clear. My other question is, if we don't have, we can always check from our budget summary of last year, the departments. Because you then provided us the CFO today. And it was not in our packet. So we go through the budget summary, and it then should reflect the departments.
Yes, ma'am.
And if they're not there, send your email.
Yes, ma'am.
So we know what we've got ahead of us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Faust.
Sir, I have one question for you. Just not really a question, but just some clarification. Are the social workers, the, is that in the contingency fund?
Yes.
It is in the contingency.
When we bring the budget with the state forms, there will be an appropriation to cover the 17 social workers out of the contingency fund.
Got you.
That you will have to approve.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
We look forward to having some more discussion. Any other questions, comments?
No.
All right. Moving to the consent agenda, please. We have already removed D. Excuse me, we won't. I'd like to remove D. And I'd like to remove for further discussion and clarification. won't, I'd like to remove D, and I'd like to remove for further discussion and clarification, E, H, I, J, and K, what is left, as you may ask.
We didn't remove D, did we? I thought we were gonna leave it.
That's what I said, I clarified myself. So, on the consent agenda, I would like to then, um, remove, set aside, D, E, H, I, J, and K, and that leaves B, C, F, and G. Repeat, I would like to set aside, D like dog, E like easy, H like happy, I like I, Any others? Did I need a motion, please, to accept consent agenda that has B, C, F, and G? B is minutes, C, human resources report, F, the Addis District Travel Sum, for Sumner, and G, the Head Start Policy Council's Director's Report and Financial Report.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to through the consent agenda with the items B, C, F, and G.
I would just like to make a comment, um, I really appreciate the Head Start Director's Report, and I'm very happy about the achievements that the parents are making in Head Start. I think it's really good in that report that many of those parents are meeting their goals. It talked about their fin, um, in the report, it talks about the financial goals, the personal goals, and just the ability for staff to help them find housing, move from the, um, situations that are not maybe conducive for them and their children. So, I really want to, um, say thank you to everyone who is working with those parents to help their family into a better situation.
And while it's in another section of the, uh, calendar, June 27th, that topic of childcare in the county is the subject of a public meeting at both 2:30 and 5:30, and is it at the Conservancy Children's Campus?
Downtown.
It's at the Conservancy on, um, Children's Campus. Um, address? Sixth and Minnesota, Fifth and Minnesota?
Fourth.
Or, or Fourth Minnesota, and that, it will be probably when a lot of that conversation also is gonna take place. Okay, um, D, I just would like to have some kind of.
Did you close out the?
Excuse me, did we had a motion? We had a motion, had a second, sorry, you made a comment. Motion to accept the consent agenda with B, C, F, and G. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed. Excuse me. Just some general comment, Ms. Levers, about the policy update for the library?
Sure.
General.
Uh, the policy was actually, uh, the, it wasn't encoded like the schools' policies, and Ms. Westfall then sent it to the state, I believe.
K S B.
Sorry?
K S B.
K S B, and they then coded it, and that's the reason why we just brought it back, so that, uh, the board could at least, um, view it and accept it.
Is this a second reading?
Yeah.
So, it's formatted similar to our school policy, so it's easier to follow?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it on your website, the library website?
Once you accept, then we'll all put the corrected one on there.
Okay, so, I guess my question should be, what are the plans for knowledge to the community?
Yeah, we'll, we'll then, once the board okay's it, and then we'll put it back on, I mean, we'll put it on the website for, for patrons to have access to it.
Any further discussion?
It'll also be part of our policies on Board Ducks as well.
It'll be the next one after the Police Department.
Right. Did you hear? I have to go in, not talking to the microphone.
I know.
Need a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, nay? Motion passed. Um, E. Clarification, justification of removing, um, discontinuing student uniform requirements at Lindbergh, Stony Point North, and Welborn? Please? I see.
I have the principals here with me today.
All right.
Um, as it reads in the agenda, or, good evening, Board, sorry.
Good evening.
Um, I have Jane Martin here from Stony Point North, and we have Zanetta Jordan, she's the Assistant Principal at Welborn. Um, the Principal Colette Chaney is away at a family, um, crisis, or I guess the death of fa, in her family, she's not able to be here tonight, and then Ivy Lee Colgan is our just retired principal from Lindbergh, but she's here tonight as well. And as it says in the memorandum, um, back in 1999, um, we used to have a uniform policy in which schools had to go through a process to adopt school uniform, um, a school uniform for their building, but we no longer have a policy around that, and these three schools have been, some of those have been three schools that did have uniforms, and they have all gone through a process of surveying parents and staff and students, um, to find out if they wanna continue with their school uniform, um, practice. And so, each of these schools have collected data, they can share their data, I don't need to speak to that, let them speak to it, and the process that they went through, and they felt that since our past process was to bring the adoption to you for approval, we thought we needed to bring the discontinuance of such to you for approval as well.
Thank you.
So, I'll let each of them speak if you want to, or do you have any, okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jane Martin from Stony Point North. Um, so, we were approached by, so through our P T A, we began to talk about uniforms. For us, um, we feed into Arrowhead and Washington, and neither of those schools are uniform schools, so we kinda started having conversations with our families, they were, um, having that, and they asked about the process, you know, what do we do to become a non-uniform school? And so, we discussed what that meant, we surveyed, um, all parents, we surveyed staff, and for us, we had, um, a total of 180 votes, 150 were parents, 30 were staff, and we had 149 yeses. So, 83%, approximately 83% voted yes to removing uniforms, not having uniforms any longer in the school. So, for us, it was just a matter of really listening to our parents and the voice that they have, um, and what they would like to see for our students. So, that's where we are with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Zanetta Bowles, I'm the Assistant Principal at Welborn. Um, I speak on behalf of Colette Chaney, my principal, and so basically, we surveyed 123 parents, um, those are the ones that responded, 93 voted, um, to do away with the uniforms, and 23 wanted to keep them. And so, basically, we, we concur with those parents that say that they don't want uniforms anymore. What ends up happening is a student comes in without a uniform, and then they start their day off, um, in a situation of go to the office, see if we have uniform for you, uh, uniform for you, or call your parent and ask the parent to bring the uniform. Well, we don't know what's going on at home, we don't know why they didn't wear it, and then it becomes an issue. And then it starts them off on a very negative pace for the day, so we just figure that instruction is most important. It is not what the child is wearing, it is how, what they're gonna be learning for that day. And if we start them off negatively, then we will not be able to get the positive impact that we need through the day.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Faust.
Good evening.
The uniform policy was in place at Lindbergh when I arrived there eight years ago, and, um, I think at that time it may have served a purpose, but, um, it no longer really does. One of the main purposes that, um, I understand that uniforms are supposed to serve is, um, evening, evening out the playing field of students so that you can't tell the socioeconomic status, but that isn't true, because, um, some children come in, um, uniforms that are clean and new and are the right size for them, and then other students either don't come to school that day because they don't have a clean uniform, or they come and they're stained and they're too small. And so, we believe it's an economic hardship for our families too, to provide two kinds of clothing for students, and then, um, if everyone just came in a uniform, it wouldn't be such a problem, but they don't. And so, then, um, there's some children who don't, just out of a lack of compliance, but then there are others out of a lack of opportunity, they're not resourced to wear a uniform to school that day. And so, we, um, surveyed our parents, and we did not include the fifth grade students who were leaving us, and then we sent one to the household of the rest of our students, and, um, 32 of them voted to approve, to keep the uniform policy, and then 49 households were, um, wanting to disapprove the uniform policy. And, um, as has been stated previously, what really matters is the instruction in the day, and as the, um, instructional leaders of the building, the principals are being called on to do more and more and more for monitoring instruction, there's less and less time to worry about who is wearing a uniform today. So, we would like for that policy to be discontinued.
Thank you. Comments?
I, I'd just like to say that I do agree with you that at a time in our past, it was necessary, and time changes, people change, and the way in which parents are dressing their children has changed, and so I think it's a good positive thing to try to make the change so that students can come, because the major focus is to learn, not what you're wearing. And the key is to make sure that we do focus on the attention of the child to get them engaged, and just like you said, uh, if they are looking at it in a negative way, learning is not going to take place that day, because sometimes children hold on not only elementary, middle, and high school as well. So, I thank you for your comments, and I like what you've said.
I, I have a question. I understand what you're saying, but what about for those kids, you were concerned about not having a uniform, but my clothes are dirty, do you have a washing machine, or is there, your social worker able to help them clean themselves up? 'Cause that's still a problem, and that's, and that's gonna be a problem if I come in and I'm ridiculed, and either way you go, you get ridiculed, I hate to say that, but that is an issue. So, how do we help them? I mean, you're saying, let's get rid of the uniform, so how do you help those kids who are still struggling? Is there something in place for them?
Well, we still have to rely on the parents or any resources that the social workers can help to get them connected with. Um, my caring for kids offered Lindbergh a washer and a dryer a few years ago, but Lindbergh is an old building, and there was no place that would support, um, that washer and dryer, so we don't have that currently in our building.
At Welborn, we're supported by, um, the Church of the Resurrection, they're a strong supporter in our building, and they offer, this, every year, they've offered uniforms, so we know that we can call on them to offer any other clothes that we have. Our nurse has clothes in her, in her area, um, our parent liaison, um, has those clothes too. So, we are able to provide kids with clothes, um, and it just, it doesn't have to be uniform.
Okay.
And at Stony Point North, we have a similar situation, so we have, um, a, a nice bank of uniforms, actually, for the students, not all sizes, but quite a few, and then we've partnered with our, one of our community partners, Multiply KC Church, and they have provided, um, a lot to uniforms for us, so we're hoping that then, I'm sure that they'll be willing to help, they're always willing, how can I help, is what they say, and so, probably some, just some basic clothes, um, in different sizes, they've provided us shoes, deodorant, you know, uh, toothbrushes, stuff like that, so, um, to help with the, um, if someone comes to school dirty or needing some things, um, we feel like we have some resources to help us out as well.
I would like to add on to a comment that also, we here at Central Office have resources for parents to go to, so whenever there is a parent who is struggling to, um, fulfill some area of their life that they're lacking or need help, the Central Office is here, we're here. So, therefore, let us not just rely on the schools in these situations, but all the schools within our school districts to know that we are your resource. If there's a situation going on, um, the Central Office is here and has many arms within the community that can help. Um, I was a parent, and our school was up for a vote to see if we wanted to keep uniforms or not, and the parents strongly voted to not have the uniforms, just because many of our students go from one school to another school to a different school based upon situations, and when I switched my child from a non-uniform school to a uniform school, I was in a bind, and I said, where am I going to find a uniform here on Friday, and you have school on Monday? What am I to do? And so, um, so that is a barrier that we're removing from our students who may have to switch schools. So, thank you so much for having those resources that you're connected to and bringing this to our attention, I appreciate it.
And thank you for involving the parents in the decision. I think it's very important that we ask their opinion, and then we listen to it, and make a, a good decision for all of our kids. And I, I know, I've talked with several, especially middle school, uh, teachers, the kids grow so fast, the parents will buy maybe two outfits, but if you don't have a washer and a dryer in your house, and you go to the laundromat once a week, you're gonna be wearing the same outfit, so it, it, it doesn't even the playing field anymore, and I just, thank you for letting the parents have their opinions heard.
I also think that even though there will be an allowance for them to wear their regular clothing, that need some stipulations on which clothing that they can wear when they do come to school, and I think that's something that is achievable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I know as I pull things off the consent counter, folks were losing it, uh, but again, this was one that we felt we needed to have more discussion on, so we appreciate you coming this evening and explaining to us, so, thank you. Motion to approve, please.
Madam President, I motion that we approve to have the uniform requirements at the schools that were mentioned as of discussion for today.
Second. Moving to seconded, to approve item E like easy. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed. Uh, number H, I'd like to hear the good things you're doing, ma'am.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Faust. I'm going to talk a little bit about the M O U that we have with United Way for our Spark Grant. So, backing up just a little bit, I wanted to give you a little bit of background on our Spark Grant. We have three partners in our Spark Grant, we have been, um, we started this grant in 2012, we've been going strong with it since 2012. The three partners in this grant are the school district, specifically the early childhood classrooms we have in the school district, and then infant toddler services, and then, and the last partner is United Way. And so, the M O U to be approved tonight is the M O U that we have with United Way, which is just one part of this grant, so I'll talk specifically about the M O U, and then if there's other questions around the Spark Grant, I can answer those as well. So, for the M O U, we partner with United Way. United Way serves the, the, um, community childcare sites in Wyandotte County as part of this grant. They have five community childcare sites that they serve. The five sites are Kitty College, The Learning Curve, Delight Ahead, Angels of Grace, and El Centro. And they also, United Way also partners with Family Conservancy to provide infrastructure support through mental health consultation, family service workers, coaching around the class assessment tool, and then general classroom support. So, the M O U that we have lists out the supports that United Way is providing to the child, the five childcare sites, and also the support that Family Conservancy is giving to those sites. So, I'd be happy to give more information about the United Way side of, um, the Spark Grant or other parts of it, if there are questions about that.
So, address the 465,295 dollars and a penny.
Okay, so, the 465,295 dollars and one cent is broken out into five different, um, amounts of money. The first goes with Class My Teaching Partner, or My Teaching Program. So, Class My Teaching Partner is something that the community sites participate in, they videotape themselves, and then there are coaches that watch the videotapes and give feedback to the teacher and support staff in the give feedback to the teacher and support staff in the classrooms. This is done, let me find the exact number of times. Six teachers participate in My Teaching Partner. They film themselves interacting with children every two weeks, and the Family Conservancy coaches review the video clips and coach the teachers. So, that is that part of it. The next part of it is social emotional training and support. So, for the social emotional training and support, the Family Conservancy helps the five childcare sites with second step curriculum and helping children to make friends, problem solve, handle conflict, handling strong emotions. So, Family Conservancy goes into the childcare sites and does the second step lessons, and then also leaves resources for the sites to use when they aren't there during the week. The next part is around mental health consultation, feedback, and services. This is also money that the Family Conservancy gets to help the childcare sites. And what this money is used for is to focus on supporting staff and parents in meeting the social and emotional developmental needs of the children in the sites. So, Family Conservancy works on a consultation basis with the childcare sites and provides strategies. They can sometimes run parent groups or provide interventions in the classroom. The next section talks about .65 FTE of the Project Specialist and of the Data Entry Specialist on the childcare partner's side of it. So, the United Way has two positions that work with the Project Spark Grant, the Project Specialist, and the Data Entry Specialist. And they spend about sixty-five percent of their time on the Project Spark Grant. And their main time is spent providing infrastructure support, but also providing training and coaching around the data collection, data entry, analyzing the data that comes with this grant, and also facilitating assessments. So, some of the childcare sites do not facilitate their own assessments for the grants, so the Project Specialist helps with that. And then, the last thing on the list is mini-grants. So, there is $1,000 set aside for each childcare site of the five sites to purchase something that they might need through a mini-grant.
Are these our locations?
These are not our locations. So, these are childcare locations, community childcare sites, Kitty College, Learning Curve, Delight Ahead, Angels of Grace, and El Centro.
So, what's our portion, and what is our responsibility?
So, the whole entire grant is a little bit over $1 million, which I could pull up specifics. This part goes to United Way, which is $465. The rest comes to the school district. So, we support four classrooms in the school district, and then we also provide about $80,000 to infant toddler services.
And it's specified in this MOU? Did I overlook it?
This MOU is just specifically with United Way and their portion of it.
Okay. So, is there another that, from the early childhood block grant, that identifies our portion?
Mm-hmm. Not part of the MOU. It would just be part of our school district information that I could get to you.
Good. Questions? Therefore, I believe you need a motion.
Move to approve.
Give a second.
Second.
Been approved. Thank you. To approve the MOU with United Way to support Project Spark. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Motion passed. Thank you. We've only been working on this concurrent resolution for, not resolution, concurrent MOU. How about that, MOU for a couple of years, right?
Right.
Just brief update.
The MOU that we have now is, by the rule of the MOU, it has to be reapproved every two years.
Okay.
So, it's been two years already. So, we're ready to reapprove once again. The only change, actually, going line by line between the two versions of the MOU, is if you look on page seven of the MOU, the very last line. Give me a second to get there. Give it a even, by the way, Board, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
So, the line that says, "Students enrolled in concurrent enrollment courses will not pay associated course fees. Students enrolled in a dual enrollment course will pay course fees." Quick clarification, concurrent course are courses that are taught by high school teachers that are approved to teach those courses. Dual courses are courses taught by the college faculty. And that can be at the high school, that can be at the college, that can be at the tech center. Those are considered dual enrollment. So, in the previously, the fees, that was kind of a point of contention between us and them about these additional fees. So, we've been able to work that part out, that we do not have to pay the fees when our teachers are the teachers of record for the class. So, that's the major change with it. And this is, what you don't see in the MOU is a lot of the behind-the-scenes work that's been going on. There've been groups from KCK, a group from KCKCC that have been working together on this. I can tell especially around textbooks. One component of that says that when possible, they use open source materials, which are free. And we have really built that collection of open source materials, so that's not costing us or the kids any money on that, or the college for that. So, I guess, what questions, since it's not changing, what questions do you have or clarifications that are needed?
I have one. So, the $485,000 that was in the payables would be for concurrent courses?
I'm not aware, do we?
Well, generically, you say students enrolled in concurrent will not pay the course fees, so the district pays then, right?
No, actually, when I spoke with Dr. Moser, and I had a conversation about if the state actually paid. So, State Bill 155 pays for concurrent courses. Senate bill, sorry, I said state, Senate bill. No, Senate bill. Senate Bill 155 is what he quoted to me.
Okay. So, okay. Other questions? We'll find out what that payment was.
Sorry, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
It was just in the payables. I just figured it was for courses, and if it's not, then may have, we'll find out. I'll ask you to find out. We'll find out. No need to deal with it now.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
If, is there any way the students know when they sign up for this? If they don't make a certain grade, is there some requirement that they have? We're paying for a lot of stuff, and we want to make sure that we're getting our investment on the dollar, that if they don't pass, what happens?
I do not believe we have a formal written policy on that, but we do have that the teachers work with the kids, they do check in with them, that's a requirement of it, that at midterm, they check in, see how the kids are doing to ensure that they pass. We're not always successful with that, but I know that's something they work towards.
Because we asked this last year. And again, you would think by now, we'd kind of have that worked out, because we're paying. And we don't want them to just think we can come and blow it off. Who cares? It's not a big deal. I didn't do it. But you want to get your full dollar, and you want to make sure. It would be really nice to see a lot more students who are graduating with a high school diploma and an associate's degree. And it's just a tragedy to see them, we pay this money, and we're not getting our investment back. And I like that idea. Yeah, we want to check, we want to work with them, but by now, they should know, or something should be in writing, if you don't, or what happens if.
So, I did speak with Dr. Moser on that same day when we were asking, because my question was, are there any indicators that the community college? And he is checking on that so that we would know. We are also in the midst of working with our diploma plus. That is some indicators that we want to know because we have individuals at the school who are, don't have a class, but they are paid. If I get the term, the acronym mixed up, so I won't call the acronym, but a diploma plus. So, we want them to be responsible for actually reviewing or schedules for those that are outside of the school, that are doing dual or concurrent and counseling students. But Dr. Moser said that he is almost sure that there is some type of indicator that can be turned on through the grades that would give us, or give the student, or let them know where they are in the grading system. I don't know. That's another question we'll have to go back to, but we did have that conversation.
I appreciate that, but there seems to be an accountability part on the student's part. We're doing this, we're giving you this, but then what are they doing in return, and what are they responsible for? Or am I just crazy? Maybe, I don't know. I'm just trying to figure it out.
We could write a policy.
You can indent them to this MOU after discussion?
Well, no, for our students. I think her question was, if a child makes an F, then what? Because the student needs to know that we're paying them. I think I'm.
Well, I mean, you would think.
Right.
Or maybe I'm naive. I would think there would be some kind of requirements, because this is a lot of money. And this is the complaint we're getting from the state legislature in Topeka, that a lot of money going out, what do you get back in return? You know, the graduation rate, the scores. So, we want to show that we're responsible, that, okay, we're paying this money, but they should be able to show something in return. And then, they need to know before they start what the expectation is. That's all I'm trying to figure out. I don't hear anybody ever saying that. We're going to check with them, we're going to see how they're doing.
So, I mean, possibly creating an agreement between the students and the parent, letting them know, because we all know that the dual and concurrent, that's not a requirement for graduation. It's extra. And so, if they're, let's say, you could set the term, if they're making an F in one class, should they be allowed to take another class? I mean, that could be something, and we put indicators in there. I'm brainstorming at this point, but we'd have to come back to talk about what that would look like.
I'm just saying, I'd like to see us take that a step further and investigate and work it out, because I just hate to see us, because this is what we get accused of. They're wasting money. You know, we're paying, people are failing, and we don't want that. We want them all to be successful. But they do have a responsibility. You just can't take the money and do nothing.
And if we're serious, we have to do it next meeting, because August is school.
Right. You're absolutely right.
August starts school.
And I'm curious, how engaging are parents in this program with this?
I guess, what do you mean by engaging?
Do they take an active role in making sure that their children are going to the classes?
That would be probably based on individual parents, how much they are. The majority of our students take them at the high school.
Okay.
So, that's not a problem because they have it there, and that it's, there's, the only reason why students would take a course at the community college would basically be because that school did not get ten students. You have to have a minimum of ten students to offer the course. So, if a student wanted to take it, and they didn't have ten students who want to take that course, the student would have to do that.
Thank you. Clarified it. Thank you.
Sure.
My concern is it probably won't be solved at the next meeting, because I think we need a deeper dive into what percentage is it happening? What does it occur? Out of what students does this impact? You know, so I'm not sure if we would have an answer by the next.
I'm not asking for an answer by the next meeting.
I said, but there is data.
Right. And so, because we haven't had the data to review, to analyze, or what have you, I just wouldn't want to rush that we come to a hasty decision next meeting without getting all the facts presented in a logical manner with data to support it.
We just need to officially request.
Right.
Start looking at certain things. We need to discuss more fully what we want to look at.
That's right.
Give us the indicators. And we need your help.
And we can provide the data that you want.
Right.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Want me to comment on anything? Or clarify anything? Want me to clarify anything?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions for gentlemen? Need a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding with the concurrent dual enrollment partnership with Kansas City Kansas Community College as presented.
Second.
Moving to second. Is this two-year agreement?
Yes.
So, it's been cut down from five to two?
Yes. In the memorandum, it actually says, every two years, we have to renew.
Okay.
Check it, look at it.
Other discussion?
With the understanding, and we'll investigate more, so if we don't do it this year, at least, we're working on it so we can have some data and make sure we hold people accountable. That's my concern.
And you'll be able to provide Dr. Moser's comments on other things, too. Comment? No comment? Okay. Ready? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Motion passed. Thank you, sir. Jay. Think it's important for us to have some insight on renewal of contracts with outside agencies for special ed services. That's why I pulled, set aside item J, not to go through everything, but give us some logic behind this, please.
Okay. Good afternoon, Madam President.
Good evening, I guess. Six-thirty.
Dr. Faust, board members. So, as a result of services that need to be delivered to students with disabilities, we contract with numerous agencies, and you've got all of those in front of you. So, I'll kind of hit the high points.
Please.
So, the first contract is with assisted transportation. They transport our students chiefly who are in wheelchairs, who maybe live in alleys or dead-end streets, so that their parents can't get them out of the house and potentially up the block, snow, ice, rain, et cetera. So, our buses cannot get to those, down those alleys or down those dead-end streets and safely turn around. So, assisted transportation provides smaller vans that have wheelchair lifts. So, that's the purpose. Currently, let's see, I think we transport three students using assisted transportation. And then, assisted transportation also has a contract with the district for transporting homeless students in the McGinni-Venten program. Care staff, Craig Home Care, and Maxim Healthcare Services are all responsible for providing our private duty nursing. So, these are students who come to school who are medically fragile, who have tracheostomies that need to be suctioned on a frequent basis. And we don't want to put our one school nurse over, you know, who has four hundred students in the building to see. So, we have a private duty nurse to make sure that their breathing is not impacted. And we contract with a variety of services agencies for that, so that if I'm a parent and I have home healthcare with Craig, then when my child comes to school, they can have that continuity of care through the same agency that's provided in the home. Quantum Health Professionals and Supplemental Healthcare, we are expanding for next school year, but currently, what we've been using them for are for occupational therapists, speech-language pathologists, physical therapists, who may be out on maternity leave or other health leave, and we don't have subs for them. So, they need to provide those therapies to students with disabilities in the absence of the therapist who's out on leave. So, we don't use them for daily absences, we use them for long-term absences. We're going to be expanding that for this next school year, looking at using these agencies to provide certified special education teachers, given our vacancies and the lack of current applicants. So, that is kind of an expanded role, and those rates are attached to those contracts. Interpreting Solutions provides interpreters for our deaf, hard-of-hearing students chiefly at JFK and Eisenhower and Schlegel. So, these are services that are not required necessarily on an eight-to-four basis, but more part-time. So, they come in. So they come in, provide some interpreting, they may provide them throughout the whole school day for a child. But if a child were to move out or move in, then this agency can provide that interpreter at the drop of a hat there. That's all they do. And so that's why we contract with them. They have a whole variety of interpreters who also come in and provide interpreting for parents who are deaf during IEP meetings. Lake Mary Center is an outside agency. They provide special education services for students who have complex disabilities that cannot be educated in the public school. So chiefly, they are students who are identified as intellectually disabled as well as with significant behavior challenges. So it is located in Paola, Kansas. We currently have one student who is being, who is receiving their education there. That student actually moved to us from out of district with that placement on his IEP from the previous district.
So that cost we, we have to absorb at that rate?
Correct. Correct. And that's for, like I said, at this time.
That catastrophic aid?
We could claim catastrophic aid. Last year, we had one student as well. We didn't meet that threshold. The expenses did not rise to that.
Level.
Yeah. Kansas City Behavioral Health Hold Co. is a transportation company. We use them to provide transportation to that, to that student who attends Lake Mary Center, because our transportation company does not have the resources, both the bus and the bus driver, to dedicate essentially three hours round trip each way, you know. So to get to pick up the child here in KCK, travel to Paola, get back here, and then do that again at the end of the day. So we use Kansas City Behavioral Hold Co. They are a very specialized transportation company who provide transportation services for students who have significant behavior needs. So they have smaller vehicles, they provide a bus aid and support, and then follow the IEP as written. Kansas City Kansas Housing Authority provides, that's a memorandum of understanding, they provide the free of charge, the house duplex that we use for our Prepare House, which is our 18 to 21-year-old program for students with disabilities. So it's right across the street from Argentine. And so this is just a renewal of that. It has been a two-year agreement historically. Score One for Health Program comes in and provides vision screening, they do dental evaluations in some of our schools. And so you'll notice in that agreement, the schools that they are currently in.
I have a question about that one.
Okay.
In Seattle, there was an outbreak of HIV being passed to the students based on hygienic methods that were being used when they were doing free dental clinics. Would you discuss or have a conversation with them, what precautions they are taking to ensure that does not occur in our district?
I sure will.
Thank you.
Other comments? Once again, I think it's important that we know this exists. Have you presented these to us before?
Yes.
Always on the consent calendar?
I'm sorry?
Always on the consent calendar?
No, I believe I came in front of you last year and went through them as well.
Okay.
But yeah, I'm always happy to answer questions. I'll be back at the end of June with some additional contracts.
Great. And I'm going to ask a hypothetical, and I hope the answer is something that would encourage the legislature to pass Medicaid expansion. Could some of these costs be absorbed if Medicaid expansion were to pass? Is some of these people eligible for?
Uh-huh. And we do bring in a lot of Medicaid revenue for some, for most of these services, as a matter of fact. So, for example, all the transportation costs from the state are reimbursable at 80% of our expenses.
Okay.
So most of these services generate some revenue.
Through the special ed budget?
Uh-huh.
Okay, through the special ed budget. But if Medicaid expansion passed, would it take the social worker to enroll the, make sure that the student is enrolled, or how would that work?
I'm not sure. The students with disabilities who are identified as Medicaid eligible, we do get fee for service revenue on them.
Okay.
And then the school district also, as a virtue of that, does get some administrative claiming for the costs of some of those nursing services.
Great.
You know, from the school nurse angle or the social work angle.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Move a second to approve these contracts? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both nay? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Goheen, just wanted you to refresh one more time. Is there, and I did not see, please, the item is the quitclaim deed. Is there a cost? I thought you said there was a cost.
There is a cost. The cost is already, you guys voted for and passed the cost last time. So we have paid that. This is the deed itself, deeding the right of way back to the school district. So it just needs to be approved because it's real estate, and then you'll need to sign it and have Susan notarize it for you.
Okay.
Once it's voted and approved on.
Questions?
Yeah, one quick question.
Yeah.
You know, Greg, was there an environmental assessment done on the property and did you review it?
There was, if there was, it was done long ago. There was not one done recently. This particular right of way, that's this railroad line, it, I don't know if it even predates the current middle school being there, because it goes through and was underneath the parking lot. So I, it's been a long time since there was actual railcar on there.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Motion, please?
Moved to approve.
Move a second to approve K. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both nay? Motion passed. And thank you for your patience. I think it's important for many of these items to have been expressly discussed, and it has taken your time, so thank you, appreciate it. Payment of bills?
Madam President, I move that we pay the bills for this month.
Second.
Move a seconded? Discussion? Any insight on the $485,000?
The description on the invoice is, says course fees. So those are fees that for courses taken at KCK CC by our students. Dual enrollment, yes.
All right. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both nay? Motion passed. It is, do you need a break before we go into executive session? Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we're about to go into executive session. I have to ask. So I need a motion to recess at 6:45 to discuss administrative level contracts pursuant to the exception for non-elected personnel under coma with no action to follow.
Yeah.
To return at, for 15 minutes, to return at 7:00.
So moved.
Move a seconded? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both nay? Motion passed. Good evening, no, no tornado this week.